And welcome to tonight's meeting of the Fort Wayne Community School Board of Trustees. We have a packed house tonight, so this ought to be a rousing pledge of allegiance. If you would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And rule call of members present.
Good evening, I'm Glenna Yale from the 2nd District.
Maria Norman, Member at Large and Duff Member at Large.
And I'm Julie Hollingsworth, elected from District 1, and my far left is Janet Dougherty, the Clerk of the Board, good evening. And the Superintendent's Chair is empty tonight because Dr. Robinson is still recovering from some eye surgeries that she had Wednesday, so she can't, she's unrestricted driving, but she's probably watching at home, so we'll say hello, Dr. Robinson, on 3. 1, 2, 3. Hello, Dr. Robinson. Okay, well, this is one of our special meetings that we have in May, just for the purpose of awards. And so, just a reminder, first of all, congrats to all of the parents and aunts and uncles and grandparents and teachers here. I know this is a proud moment for you, so congratulations. You will have plenty of time to take pictures, so get up in the aisle or come down in front and take pictures, that won't bother us. And then when you leave, we have 2 exit doors to your right, the double doors right there, and then the single door right there that leads into the hallway and then back out into the lobby. So you will not offend us at all if you leave once those awards have been given. Okay. So, first, we begin with the Indiana State PTA Reflections Award, and this is just the elementary level. So, the Board is recognizing students who are recipient of awards in the Indiana State PTA Reflections Program. A member of Fort Wayne, a number of Fort Wayne Community School students were recognized by the Indiana PTA for their entries in the Citizenship and Reflections Program. The Reflections Program is open to students in kindergarten through grade 12. A student who received a state award of outstanding interpretation advanced to the national level. This year's theme was Heroes Around Me. Students expressed themselves through literature, visual art, photography, dance choreography, film and video production, musical composition, and essay. So please come forward as your name is read, so that we may congratulate you. And so we have Assistant Superintendent Getnickles, are you doing the honors of handing out the...
We're just giving to them a whole package, Principal.
Okay, okay. Then they can fight it out after that. Okay. First, from Croninger Elementary School, we have Olivia Adams in Literature. Come on down. So Olivia must be in, what, 5th grade? Victoria Allen, Visual Arts. Amaya Bowen, Photography. Mackenzie Bowen, Visual Arts. Elijah Quayar, Photography. Liliana Flight, Dance Choreography. Morgan Fuller, Literature. Are those rabbit ears? Cat ears? Rabbit? Okay, nice, I like that. Did you make those? Brooklyn Hutzel, Visual Arts. Carter Kelly, Music Composition. Faith Lorraine, Photography. Juliana Loudon, 3D Visual Arts. Tyler McIntosh, Photography. Joelga Portella, Dance Choreography. Sawyer Potter, Music Composition. Owen Potter, Music Composition. Sophie Prowse, Film and Video Production. Ella Rector, Literature. Logan Sanders, Literature. Madeline Stepka, Film and Video Production. And teachers, if you're here, come on down. We have Sherry Bradshaw, Angie Frazier, Fran Hewitt, Tracy McKinnon, Sarah Pearson, Heather Stutphen, Andy Wilkerson, and Croninger Principal Carrie Kennedy. Come on down. So close in, get close to your classmates. And anyone who wishes to take a picture, plenty of time. Don't be shy.
Yes, make sure you get a good picture.
Yeah, get in front. Exit to your lap. And again, parents, if you're leaving, also, get right up and go. Don't want anyone getting lost out there. 2 seats, they've got some empty seats down in front. Okay. Next, we have, from Haley Elementary School, Sophia Moore, Music Composition. Anthony Wally, Music Composition. And Wendy Bloom, Teacher, and Brandon White, Principal. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, next, we have Harris Elementary School. Nathan Armstrong, Film and Video Production. Jackson Breelmeier, Photography. Leanna Briggs, Literature. Eliana Brower, Music Composition. Jacqueline Kappa, Visual Arts. Aleah Dennis, Photography. Zoe Ealing, Visual Arts. Casimir Snyder, Photography. Grace Whitehead, Photography. Benjamin Wilson, Visual Arts. And Christopher Wilson, Visual Arts. Teachers, if you're here, Elizabeth Baumann, Linda Benjamin, Christine Dwyer, Kimberly Ford, Eric Haberkorn, Jennifer Huffer, Linda Millet, Sarah Quigley, and Harris Principal Jana Ankenbro. Scoot in. Get close to your brother. Congratulations. Okay, next, we have Studi Elementary School. Jordan Rooker, Visual Arts. Oops, my fault, my fault. Thank you. Erwin Elementary School. Harrison Hill. I'm not in a hurry to get anywhere, honestly. Okay, Harrison Hill Elementary School. Minnie Carter Weaver, Literature. Vincent Flynn, Visual Arts. Gabriela Martinez, Visual Arts. Zora Mitchell, Literature. Malia Muff, Visual Arts. Adeline Posey, Visual Arts. Karina Rivas, Literature. Kalen Simpson, Literature. And Nicole Moore, Teacher, and Shannon Rogers, Harrison Hill Principal.
Marking these up, so you know where I am.
I can't stand still.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. 3 chairs down in front.
Sitting up front.
Everybody wants to sit down in front?
All down.
Okay, next, we have Erwin Elementary School. We have Weston Detmer, Film, Video Production and Photography. Jade Henry, Visual Arts. Xavier Holbrook, Film, Video Production. Natifa Youssef, Dance Choreography. And Zainab Youssef, Visual Arts. And Erwin Principal Mary Canary. Scoot in a little bit, scoot in. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, now, we have Studi Elementary School. Jordan Bruford, Visual Arts. Madison Garza, Visual Arts. Leroy Johnson, Visual Arts. Tegan Pala, Visual Arts. And Viper Ray Simcox, Visual Arts. Teachers, Michael Allen, Angela Clevenger, Cynthia Shelby, and Studi Principal Elizabeth Cleaver.
Any more pictures?
Congratulations. Bunch of seats available. Okay, now, we have Whitney Young. We have Lincoln Bezwick, Visual Arts. Kingston Campbell, Visual Arts. Maximus Carrillo, Visual Arts. Elliot Cashdollar, Visual Arts. Joseph Darling, Visual Arts. Keandra Gunn, Visual Arts. Isabella Hall, Visual Arts. Caitlin Hawthorne, Visual Arts. June Holden, Visual Arts. Bentley Langston, Visual Arts. Kenai Lynn, Visual Arts. Maxwell Murphy, Visual Arts. Connor Putt, Visual Arts. Kayden Wallace, Visual Arts. Bryson Watts, Visual Arts. And Adrianne Williams, Visual Arts. Teachers, if you're here, we have Andrea Jones, Erin Patton-McFarren, and Whitney Young Principal Melissa Plonk.
Mommy's trying to get up there so I can get a picture of Booty.
You know, I couldn't teach at that level because I would laugh all the time.
They are so cute.
Maybe not at, maybe not at high grade. I would just laugh all the time.
Anyone else? One more? Any more, are we done? Hey, very good, you all were very patient. Bagley. Oh yeah, okay. Good to see you, great, good to see you. Next, we have, Maria Norman is going to take the Middle School PTA Reflection Awards.
All right, so from Jefferson Middle School, we have Annalise Fazaro, Visual Arts. J.C. Johnson, Visual Arts. Okay, and then Giselle Soto, Visual Arts. Mr. King's here. Congratulations to your students. And then from Kikianga, we have Husin Alshibani in Visual Arts. Avery Gordon, Literature. Brandy Martin, Literature. Caleb Royal, Visual Arts. And then we have teachers, Angela Buchel, Annie Davis, Candace Denno, and then there wasn't a Principal listed.
Matt Cheeple, represented by Mark Bailey.
Any more pictures? Congratulations. All right, next up, we have the awards from Memorial Park. We have Kylie Baca, Dance Choreography. And Michaela Kleima, Photography, Visual Arts. And we have teachers, Amy Clark, and Nalani Kiesler, and Principal Bradley Kosher.
Congratulations. And now, we have the High School Awards. Glenna?
At this time, the Board would like to recognize the students who are the recipients of awards from the Indiana State PTA Reflections Program. And from Northside High School, would John Miley come forward for Photography? Emma Seawall for Photography. And we have teacher Sherri Shepherd, and Principal David West.
Congratulations. And next, Ann will do our Air Force JROTC Award.
It is recommended that the Board recognize the Wayne High School Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps Unit for being named an Outstanding Organization for 2018-19 by the Department of Defense, Air Force, Air University. The Wayne High School Air Force JROTC Unit has been given the Outstanding Organization Award. Wayne has earned this award for the second consecutive year. This award recognizes the personal growth and accomplishments of the cadets, contributions of the instructors and mentors, and support of the school and local community. Please come forward as your name is read so we may congratulate you. Chief Master Sergeant Jeffrey Wepner, Instructor. Major Jeffrey Herman, Instructor. And John Hauser, Principal.
Okay, next, it's recommended that the Board recognize the Fort Wayne Community Schools Career Academy Students that placed in the Skills USA Competitions April 19th and 20th in Indianapolis. Students who received a first place in Skills USA will be competing at Nationals in Louisville, Kentucky the week of June 24th. Seventy-five students attended the 2019 Indiana State Skills USA Leadership Conference in Indianapolis to compete in various skill competitions within their career and tech field. We had a record number of podium finishers this year with seventeen students earning the state title and the opportunity to compete at the National Skills USA Competition in Louisville, Kentucky the week of June 24th. Wow. So please come forward as your name is read. And we have Shyne Ung, Advertising Design and Pen Design. Jacob Berry, Teamworks. Eric Blackwell, Electrical Construction Wiring. Angel Carrillo, Web Design. Hector Garrido, Teamworks. Sierra Graham, Promotional Bulletin Board and T-shirt Design. Eric Hartman, Plumbing. Noah Huganard, Masonry. Elijah Lance, Carpentry. Brooklyn Luger, Promotional Bulletin Board. Josh Mayer, Teamworks. Pierce Reichert, Teamworks. Jordan Reynolds, Web Design. Carlos Rosa, Cabinet Making. Emily Wilson, Promotional Bulletin Board. And so these are your first-place students who will be competing in Nationals in June. Good luck to you. Way to form a couple rows. Congratulations. Okay, next, we have the second-place finishers. Gazelle Aforo, Promotional Bulletin Board. Molly Brock, Pen Design and Promotional Bulletin Board. Joshua Flores, T-shirt Design. Brooklyn Luger, Advertising Design. Brooklyn haven't had time to run around and come in again. Anija McGraw, Web Design. Han Mo, Web Design. Andrew Pruser, Cabinet Making. Ruth Ramirez, Childhood Education. Tyler Rossworm, Carpentry. And Jashawn Wilson, Web Design. Squeeze in. What do you think? Okay, how many there were? Scooch in. Scooch in, scooch in. Couple rows, maybe?
There you go, good job.
Which one? I think Rita. Oh, it's the next one. Teacher here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations to you. Good work, congratulations. Congratulations. Thanks for coming.
And the third-place finishers, we have Ku Ku Ung, T-shirt Design. Sierra Graham, Advertising Design and Pen Design. Anna Handwer, Childhood Education. Logan King, Electrical Construction Wiring. Dominic Lee, Restaurant Service. William Pancake, Cabinet Making. And Jacob Zimmerman, Sheet Metal. And if we have any instructors here, those would be Ann Applegate, Frederick Capps, Karen Gilli, Nicholas Mers, Christopher Roberts, Larry Schaefer, Kimberly Swain, Catherine Wise, and Anthus Principal Jessie Webb. I have to say, these are kind of my favorite awards. We certainly need more plumbers, and electricians, and cabinet makers, and childhood education, and restaurant service, et cetera. Fabulous programs. Gloria?
All right, it's recommended that the Board recognize the FWCS Career Academy Students who placed in the top ten in the Health Occupation Students of America Competitions on April 16th through the 18th in Indianapolis. The Health Occupation Students of America, or HOSA for short, Future Health Professionals is a career and technical education student organization. Students explore healthcare professions, develop leadership qualities, professionalism, gain competence in the patient care setting, earn college credit, and provide community service. At the State Leadership Conference in Indianapolis, forty-one FWCS students competed in many events using skills they learned in class or at their clinical sites. Our FWCS HOSA Chapter won the most professional HOSA Chapter in Indiana. Please come forward as your name is read so we may congratulate you. Can Top Ten, Oprahsha Carter. Reissa Acuera. Do we want them in groups or all together? All together, okay. Medical Terminology Top Ten, Haley Aurelio, Number Three in State. Samra Catic. And Janet Flores. Human Growth and Development Top Ten, Mackenzie Triplet. Medical Assisting Top Ten, and HOSA Bowl Top Ten, Alex Amaden, Number One in the State for Medical Assisting. Nick Barnett. Tim Stein. Christian Velez. And CPR and First Aid, Number Two in the State, Joslyn Acapina. Sorry, I probably butchered that. Samra Catic. And we have Teacher Lisa Schaefer and Principal Jessie Webb.
Scooch in, second row.
Congratulations, that's impressive.
Congratulations, good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job, congratulations.
DeAndre, good to see you. Come back.
Have a good night, have a good night, thanks for coming.
By the way, fellow Board members, the Construction Trades Class builds a school, builds a house every year, and they're having an open house on June 3rd. So if you want to know, if you're interested in going, and it's fabulous. The students are there, and it's really cool. I'll give you the address.
Okay, Glenna?
At this time, we would like to recognize the High School Dance Team Association Finalists at the AmeriDance International Finals. So we are recognizing those students at Northrop High School Dance Teams for placing in the top ten in the state and AmeriDance International Competitions. Please come forward as your name is read. The Northrop Dance Team is a member of the Indiana High School Dance Team Association and competes throughout the state of Indiana. In March, they competed at the AmeriDance International in Orlando, Florida. Students competed individually and as a team in a variety of dance styles, including hip-hop and jazz. The varsity jazz group was named National Grand Champions.
Wow, awesome.
So please come forward at this time as we read your names, so that we may congratulate you. Kaya Abdullah.
Oh, no, your dancing's been cut short for a while.
Emma Black. Taylor Carr. Tamia Collins. Kiara Daniels. Lynn Dintron. Mara Fisher. Megan Fleischer. Anna Foster. Anthony Lovato. Lynn Luke. Haley Miller. Grace Parkinson. Hannah Razor. Amelia Skimos. Jayden Walter. Along with them, we have Coaches Sammy Gerber, Kylene James, Head Coach Lisa Helma, and Principal Jason Werzengruder.
So Kaya, I have to ask, is that a dance-related injury? Yes, he left it all on the dance floor.
You should ask them how many injuries they've got.
Look at that, they even know how to pose.
They've done this before.
Yes, they have. Congratulations.
It is recommended that the board recognize the Snyder and Southside students who have been selected to participate in the Indiana University Honors Program in Foreign Languages. Students who have taken a foreign language for at least three years at their home high school can apply to study abroad for six weeks during the summer in Austria, France, or Spain. Students take classes, live with the host family, and go on weekly cultural excursions. Students undergo a rigorous application process that evaluates their language proficiency as well as their emotional and personal strengths in order to be successful during the program. The rigorous program prepares students who wish to continue their language study beyond high school, receive marks on AP, IB, language exams, and to further their language knowledge. Please come forward as your name is read so we may congratulate you. Stuart Finley is going to France, he is from Snyder. Also from Snyder, Sharnice Gage Scroggins. Samuel Hefty. And Sierra Williams. She is going to France as well. From Southside, we have Kuda Dine going to France. Or Dean if she's from France. And Danielle Gils, she is going to Spain, and Sophia Horn is going to France.
Congratulations. Have a great experience. Next, it is recommended that the board recognize Snyder High School Journalism Students who placed in the Women's Press Club of Indiana Contest. The National Federation of Press Women and its state affiliate, the Women's Press Club of Indiana sponsor an annual contest for high school journalists in Indiana. Students who receive a first-place award are forwarded to the national competition. So please come forward. We have Grace McCormick, first and second place in opinion. We have William O'Brien, second place in columns. We have Harrison Snyder, first and second place in opinion and second place in columns. And we have Ashley Witte, third place in editorial. We have Teacher Pamela O'Reilly and Principal Chad Hisong. So has national competition already occurred or? Yeah, okay. Awesome. What, Harrison? Well, we won't say anything. And somebody should, yeah. Looks like you're coming up, coming down again. Maria?
It is recommended that the board recognize the Snyder High School Journalism Students who were recognized as members of the National Scholastic Press Association Honor Roll. The NSPA Honor Roll of Student Journalists honors students who have worked on an NSPA member publication for two or more years and have maintained a grade point average of at least a 3.5 on a four-point scale. We have Zoe Freiberger. And Kendra McDaniel.
And Glenna? We get to wrap it up.
Okay, the last category that we are recognizing tonight is the Snyder High School Journalism Students who have won awards at the Ball State University Journalism Day Contest. Ball State University's Annual Journalism Day draws high school journalists and their advisors to campus for a day of informative sessions and journalism-related activities. The J-Day Contest is a means for high schools to get valuable feedback on their publications as well as recognition for the most outstanding entries. Students from several states compete in this contest which recognizes excellence in high school journalism. Please come forward as your name is read and we will congratulate you. Jennifer Cruz was recognized for Superior Personality Feature. Danielle Holkerson for Excellent Personality Feature and Superior Personality Feature. William O'Brien was recognized for Excellent Opinion Story and Superior Opinion Story. And then Harrison Snyder was recognized for Excellent Opinion Story and Superior Opinion Story.
Well, congratulations Pamela. It appears as though Snyder has a terrific journalism program, so congratulations. I'm sure your leadership is a great, is a big part of it. That's awesome. So that brings us basically to the close of our meeting. We have nothing else, we have no old or new business, we have no reports. Any member comments?
Oh, no. This is one of our favorite meetings because it is so exciting to see all the different areas that the students in our district are succeeding in.
I know we mentioned it at the beginning, but it does take a village to get all these students here, so just want to thank everybody who worked behind the scenes to make sure everyone was in line in the proper order, and all the picture takers, and congratulations to all the families of the students, and congratulations again to all the students.
You're right, that's quite an organizational feat. I mean, when I came in back there, they were wound all through that back hallway and who knows where they were.
I'll say ditto.
Yep. Yep, and congratulations to all of our teachers and school leaders who make all these programs possible for our students. The variety of programs that, you know, are offered in our schools and the opportunities that students get is really outstanding, I think, and a big part of what makes our district successful. So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
And before we vote, we do have a meeting next Monday, May 20th. I'm sure there'll be some additional awards and recognitions then. Okay, all those in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, that's a wrap. What's that? Anyone at the, want to?